The Rotary Club of Columbus is a membership organization with a passion for service. Founded in 1915, we're one of Rotary's largest and oldest clubs worldwide. My name is Tyler Townsend, and I have the privilege of serving as the 2019-2020 club member. We all know the challenges the coronavirus pandemic is posing. Our club has faced tough times, including two world wars, but this is the first time we've had to suspend our in-person meetings. So instead of meeting here at the Trade Center, we're going to meet every week online until it's appropriate to return. So whether you're a member or a guest, thank you for joining us today. We're happy to get your attention.
Welcome to the May 20th meeting of the Rotary Club of Columbus. We're broadcasting live from the National Infantry Museum, and we're standing at the beginning of the last 100 yards, the museum's signature exhibit. Thank you for keeping Rotary on your calendar. We're reaching people through Facebook, both live and on-demand, and on our YouTube channel, and even through our audio-only capability through our club conference call line. Our club has a proud tradition of honoring a special military guest at each of our meetings. Today, Andy Redman will introduce our Soldier of the Week.
Good afternoon, President Tyler, fellow Rotarians. It's my honor to continue the Columbus Rotary tradition of honoring soldiers in Fort Benning. Today, I have the honor of introducing Staff Sergeant Vanessa Garcia, who is in the First Security Forces Assistance Brigade here at Fort Benning. They train and advise foreign militaries. So that organization, the SFAB, the first one stood up in the Army, has deployed before, had soldiers in Africa when coronavirus started. We'll send some in the future, and then way out in the future, we'll deploy again as a whole brigade. Sergeant Garcia joined the Army in 2013 from her hometown in San Antonio, Texas. She's got multiple awards during her time in the Army. She's married. Her husband Jeremy was in the Army but still here with her, and they have an eight-year-old daughter, Janay. So Sergeant Garcia, it's an honor to have you here this morning, standing in front of our Global War on Terrorism Memorial, thinking about what next Monday is all about with Memorial Day and honoring soldiers and families. We've got a gift for you from the Rotary Club. The Passport to the Arts has two tickets each to the River Center, the Columbus Symphony Orchestra, Columbus State University, the Springer Opera House, and obviously, our attractions here at the Infantry Museum. We hope you and Jeremy will take advantage of it. Obviously, you probably want to find a babysitter for Janay. But we also have the Rotary Coin, and would like to say thank you to you and all of your fellow soldiers at Fort Benning. So the floor is yours.
Thank you so much for all your support.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon.
Thank you, Andy, and Staff Sergeant Garcia. On behalf of our club, I want to thank you and your fellow soldiers at Fort Benning for the service you provide in protecting our country. We look forward to hosting you as our guests when we return to in-person meetings. During this difficult time, we've seen organizations adapt to serve our community. Many of these organizations are led by our own Rotarians. And at this time, Pete Jones will talk to us about how the National Infantry Museum is serving.
President Tyler, fellow Rotarians, I'm Brigadier General retired Pete Jones, and I'm glad to welcome you here to the National Infantry Museum. It's a quiet time here. We miss our soldiers, our families, and the public. But most importantly, we miss our volunteers who would normally be manning these great information desks, welcoming our visitors here to the museum, and at the same time, taking care of folks as they come in and have questions about our gallery. But we have been busy. Even though we have lifted the stay-at-home order, we've brought our folks back in, and we've cleaned, maintained, and sought to give ourselves a 10-year facelift. Whether it be re-vernishing and restocking our tables and chairs, to setting up and cleaning some of, to be honest with you, the dust bunnies from 10 years down our last 100-yard walk. But one of the biggest things we've done is help to rejuvenate our soldier store. Our rejuvenated soldier store is one of the prides that we're going to have as we reopen here, hopefully, in a limited basis as of the 1st of June. We've remodeled, restocked, and as you can see, tried to bring a light airy color to it. Not only will we continue to support our soldiers with things like boots and knives, but we're going to make this a true museum gift shop where those folks who want hailing farewell items, or even folks from the Columbus community, want those things that are unique, especially for the seasons, like 4th of July that's coming up. We ask you to come check out this new soldier store, and also spend time at our museum and our other attractions. Like many businesses who are starting to reopen after the stay-at-home order, we realize that we have to operate differently. To that end, we're looking at reinforcing social distances, putting in signage that will direct people correctly through our galleries and into our attractions, educating our employees on how to maintain social distance, wear proper protective equipment, and take care of our visitors and our employee workforce. And then finally, we realize it's not just a matter of being safe, but also being clean. So sanitizing folks as they come in and leave. But our mission is unique. Not only are we here to honor soldiers past, present, and future, and take care of their families, and honor their service and sacrifice, but it is also to educate the next generation of infantry men and women who graduate at Fort Benning, who move on to protect our nation at the four corners of the world. To that end, we're working very diligently with Fort Benning on a scaled reopening. And additionally, probably what that will mean is closed-off venues so that our soldiers can get trained on their service and their heritage and the sacrifice of being an infantry soldier. And then we'll move on to close to the public graduations on Inaway Field, so families that are far away can truly see it through social media and understand the joy that their family members have accomplished by becoming infantry soldiers. And then finally, we will open it up to the public, probably in a limited capacity, but in a way that maintains social distance, takes care of them as our visitors, and also protects our employees. But either way, we look forward to reopening and becoming again a part of the Columbus community, and we look forward to having you come through our doors.
Thank you, Pete, and to your staff for being such wonderful stewards of this museum. This is a treasure for our nation, and we're proud that it calls Columbus home. Before we introduce our program, I have a couple of quick announcements. I'm going to borrow an idea I heard last night. It's maybe semantics, but it does hold an important message. When we talk about social distancing, we're really talking about physical distancing. We don't want to be socially distanced. We want to be together socially. And so in addition to our weekly meetings, we also are encouraging you to attend our weekly online Rotary Poker. It's a friendly game, no money, changes hands. It's for beginners and experienced players, Mondays at 8:30. We'll also have tomorrow evening an online happy hour from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. You'll receive a link by email, and we encourage you to drop by and say hello. And then June 5th, we'll have an online breakfast mix. Grace Burton Edwards will speak with us, and I encourage you to attend that as well. So please use these opportunities to remain socially together with us. Andy Redman will now introduce our program.
Thank you, President Tyler. Fellow Rotarians, it's truly an honor for us at the National Infantry Museum to participate in today's program, as our nation prepares to pause next Monday to think about the sacrifice of soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines have made for our freedom. Today, we've got a couple of very special guest speakers for you that go by the name of Gold Star Spouse and Gold Star Mom. The phrase "Gold Star" dates back to World War I, when military families started a tradition of displaying a flag in their window with a blue star for each servicemember that was serving. When a servicemember fell in combat, they would cover that blue star with a gold star, and that started the tradition of the Gold Star Recognition Program. After World War I, multiple organizations were formed to support these families: Gold Star Moms, Gold Star Spouses, Gold Star Families. And in 1947, the Department of Defense created the Gold Star Family Pen that you will see the family members wearing. It's a gold star on a purple background you'll see on lapels. That is a fraternity that's very close, very special, and one that none of those members wanted to join. Our first speaker today is Gold Star Wife Nicole DeSenzo. Nicole's husband, Captain Douglas DeSenzo, was a star athlete at SI School in Plymouth, New Hampshire, went on to graduate from the U.S. Military Academy at West Point in 1999. He completed Airborne Ranger School here at Fort Benning, and was a company commander in the 2nd Battalion, 6th Infantry Regiment, 2nd Brigade, 1st Armor Division when they deployed to Iraq. Captain DeSenzo was killed in Iraq on 25 May 2006 when his Humvee struck a roadside improvised explosive device. Nicole and Doug have one son, Dak, and Nicole and Dak still live here in the Columbus area. So Nicole, thank you for being here today.
Keep smiling. That's how my husband always signed his letters. Keep smiling. And though I cannot see your smiling faces today, I really appreciate you guys wanting to hear my story and hear about my husband. Doug was an amazing individual. Today, I'm not going to really tell you what he accomplished. What I want to do is tell you kind of who he was and who we were as a couple. As was already said, Doug grew up in a really small town of Plymouth, New Hampshire. He was a really popular kid in high school. He was the president of the class. He was the football captain and the wrestling captain. But Doug was not only popular, he was also extremely nice. He was one of those nice guys that you hardly ever meet anymore. He was the kind of guy that in gym class, he would ask the outcast of the class to be his partner and not a friend. He would ask the outcast. So that's kind of who he was. He was not only popular and nice, he was also a leader. Doug knew what he wanted to be. He wanted to be an infantryman. He wanted to lead men. And so he only applied to one college. His mother tried to get him to apply to a lot more, but Doug refused. He wanted to go to West Point. And so he got into West Point and learned to be an infantryman, and he graduated in 1999. And he came down to Columbus, Georgia for the Infantry Officers Basic Course. We met in December of that same year. I was actually a financial planner in Memphis, Tennessee, and Doug was about to go into Ranger School. But he went over to Huntsville, Alabama to visit his sponsors that were from West Point, and they had just left West Point to be in Huntsville. And my dad lived in Huntsville, so I went over to visit my dad around Christmas time, and he said, "Bring something nice, Nick. We're going to go to a Christmas party." I kind of ran into these people that we haven't seen in 10 years, and they just invited us. So we're going to go. I'm like, "Okay." So we went to this party, and of course, Doug and myself were the only people there that were a little bit young. And so we kind of gravitated to each other, and we talked the entire night. And so I gave him my phone number, not knowing what in the world to expect. So I got home the next day, and he had already emailed me. He didn't have the normal three-day rule that most guys do. So he'd already emailed me, and we pretty much talked every night after that. He went to visit his parents in Plymouth, New Hampshire over Christmas, and I was in Memphis. And so on the way back to Columbus, Georgia, in Fort Benning, he kind of did a little detour over to Memphis, and our first date was New Year's Eve 1999. And so we met every weekend after that. It was kind of love at first sight. We met every weekend after that until he proposed in April on my birthday, and he was about to go into Ranger School in May. And so when he was in Ranger School, I was packing my house and selling my house and all that good stuff. So I met him when he graduated Ranger School. And over the next few months, I met him at graduation, and we got all our stuff together, and we drove up to Fairbanks, Alaska, his first duty station. And so the southern girl that doesn't like the cold went up to Fairbanks, Alaska. And we got married in Fairbanks. We kind of eloped, semi-eloped, and when we arrived in Fairbanks, we got a justice of the peace, and we got a photographer, and we went to a little cabin in the woods. And you saw from the pictures that were scrolling before this, we got married the first snowfall on September 30th. I was walking out in the snow in a short-sleeve dress, but it was awesome because both Doug and myself really loved the outdoors, and so it was the perfect wedding ceremony. Being in the infantry fit Doug perfectly. He loved the outside. He loved hunting. He loved swimming. He loved hiking. He loved biking, and so it was the perfect fit for him. In Alaska, one of our favorite things to do was to ski into cabins in the winter. So there was a little remote cabins in the woods, and you would actually ski in with all your gear, and you would spend the night in this cabin. You'd light a fire and play cards, and then you'd get back up the next day and ski back out. So that was Doug. He was always in for an adventure and loved exercise and being outside. After Alaska, we moved back to Columbus for the career course. And that's why I'm here today, because in Columbus, Georgia, you not only have the military presence, we also met some really just awesome people that weren't military, that were just stationed here forever. And so eventually, that's why I ended up coming back here, because we met some really good people. We were only here for nine months for the career course, and then we moved to Heidelberg, Germany, and Doug was stationed at 5th Corps, and we worked there for a year. Or he worked there for a year. And during that time, our son Dak was born. We were only there a year, and then we were stationed at Baumholder, Germany, where Doug took command of Sea Company 26th Infantry. We lived in a small town of Birkenfeld, about eight miles from Baumholder. And so Doug, being the athletic person he was, he would get up at 4:30 in the morning because we only had one car, and he would bike over mountains and windy roads into work, and then go directly to PT with his guys. So the big joke with his guys was, "Let's smoke the commander at PT." So they always tried to smoke Doug. I don't think they ever succeeded, because Doug's motto was "Keep smiling." And so if you had him do a 10-mile road march or 1,000 burpees, he would still be smiling at the end. That's just who he was. Before they deployed in November of 2005, we attended our last church service together. And I'm telling you this because it was a really important moment in my life, and it's why I'm standing here today, smiling with you guys. We attended our last church service together, and Doug was not one of those people that needed attention. He didn't want to be the center of attention at all. And so, you know, if somebody asked a group to come forward, he would just go, "That's fine. I can just sit right here." But during that last church service, our pastor asked all the guys that were deploying to come up, and Doug went up. So at that moment, I knew it was really important for him to be up there. And as all the guys that were deploying were standing in a circle, as I'm doing now, I started crying. And a girl from behind me leaned forward and said, "He's going to be okay," because she thought I was crying because I thought the worst may happen. But that's not why I was crying. I was crying because I knew, even if the worst happened, he was going to be okay. God had him. God had him, and he would be okay. I would see him again, even if not in this life. And that is what happened. That's why I'm here. Dak was 10 months old when Doug deployed, and we never saw him again. He wanted all of his guys to come back for R&amp;R before he did, and so he was one of the last ones to come or scheduled to come back. And so that would have been about two weeks after the IED exploded by his door. The day was May 25th, and if you notice the date, May 25th this year is actually Memorial Day. So he was killed over Memorial Day weekend, so it's a double whammy for me. So please remember me on May 25th, this Monday. After everything happened, we were in Germany, and I flew back to New Hampshire for the funeral, and the first urn was there. At the time of my notification, I had to sign a paper stating, "If any more remains were found, I would want to know." And of course, I did. Two months after the incident, I get a phone call saying more of Doug was found. So the second urn came a few weeks later. I again had to sign another paper. And so six months after the IED exploded, I get another phone call, a third urn was coming home. I didn't know at the time how bad the IED explosion was, but it went off right beside his door, and the upper half of him was bits and pieces in Baghdad. There was not really anything recognizable. But here's what I know: God's got him, and he's okay. And I know I'm going to see him again, and that's what gets me through the day. Keep smiling. That's what he would want me to do, and that's what I do. That's what he would want you to do in crazy times such as coronavirus pandemics and anything that happens in your life that is hard. Keep smiling. That is what Doug would say. If you want to know more about my story, I have a website. It's nicsrevelations.com. I've actually written a book about my entire experience called Revelations: A Survivor's Story of Faith, Hope, and the Coming Kingdom. You can find that on my site. Dak is now 15 years old, and he is just like his dad. He is popular, and he's nice, and he smiles all the time. And I have a really good life, thanks to people like you that want to keep his memory alive. So I really appreciate you guys today, and I hope you have a great day and a Memorial Day weekend. Thank you very much.
Wow, thanks, Nicole. Our next speaker is Gold Star Mother Janet Crane. Janet's son Specialist Jason Eden graduated from Franklin High School in Tennessee in 2007, joined the Army in 2009. He completed infantry training here at Fort Benning, had deployed to Afghanistan. He was assigned to the 1st Squadron, 13th Cavalry Regiment, 3rd Brigade Combat Team, 1st Armor Division at Fort Bliss, Texas. Specialist Eden died on 26 April 2012 from wounds suffered in a firefight in Afghanistan on 15 April 2012. Janet, thank you for being here.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for inviting me here today and allowing me to tell my son's story. As they said, my name is Janet Crane, and I hold many titles. I am an Ironman triathlete, a runner, and international student advisor at Columbus State University. I am a board member on Chattahoochee Triathlon Club. I'm a member of the Steering Committee here at Fort Benning for the Survivor Outreach Group. I'm a wife, a friend, and a mentor, to name a few. The title that I hold and find most difficult to carry is that of a Gold Star Mother. As explained, a Gold Star Mother is a mother whose child died were serving in the military. It is a title that is earned, although not sought, and it is a club that no mother wants to be in. However, life has given me this title, and it is a role that I do not take lightly. Jason Colletons was born on June 6, 1989 in Nashville, Tennessee. After 12 hours of labor, Jason was still being stubborn and refused to make his appearance. An emergency C-section was performed, and he came crying and screaming into the world. That stubbornness continued throughout his life, and just like his mother, once his mind was made up, there really wasn't anything that was going to change it. When Jason told me that he was thinking about joining the military, I really didn't take him seriously. Getting up at 4:00 a.m. to exercise was not something I could see my child doing unlike me. The next thing I knew, he told me he had signed on the dotted line. I just remember saying, "Oh, Jason, why did you do that? You know that you're going to get deployed." To which he replied, "No, Mom. By the time I get through, basically, the war will be over." The choice was made, and Jason entered the Army in January of 2009. He did his basic in AIT training at Fort Benning, and in May 2009, he graduated on the sacred parade field by the Infantry Museum where we stand today. At the time, we were living in Kentucky and came to see him graduate. He was so young and so eager to get out of hot and muggy Georgia and couldn't wait to get somewhere better. The Army obliged him and sent him to El Paso, Texas. At least, it's not humid there. Jason continued his training at Fort Bliss, and I was able to visit him there in December of 2010. I could not believe the mature man that he had become. I was so proud of him, and we made a lot of memories that visit that I didn't realize would have to last me a lifetime. At the time, my husband and I had moved to Phoenix City, Alabama, with the base realignment and closure process that had occurred. Jason and I met in Chattanooga, Tennessee in July 2011 so that I could see him before he left for Afghanistan in October. It was our last visit together and the last time I saw my son conscious. On April 15, 2012, approximately 80 days before Jason was scheduled to return, he was wounded by small arms fire in Lagman Province, Afghanistan. Eleven days of uncertainty, hope, disappointment, and finally, acceptance that Jason was not going to recover or endure. The decision was made by all of his family to remove life support. Jason passed away in the early morning hours of April 26, 2012, with me holding his hand, my husband Mike, and his stepsister Kelly by his side. There are no words to explain what that feels like. Jason was my only child, and to lose him at 22 was just inconceivable. I searched and found other Gold Star Mothers who were able to bring me great comfort and who helped me on my journey through the darkness. My family and friends and the Columbus community embraced me and provided so much love and support. However, I knew that only I, with God holding me up, could truly find my way through the grief. I had a choice to make. I could wallow in my grief and let Jason's life end when he died, or I could celebrate his life and carry his name with me each and every day. I choose to carry him with me on every swim, bike, and run, and every race that I do. My greatest achievement has been completing a full Ironman triathlon, which included a 2.4-mile swim, 116-mile bike ride, followed by a full 26.2 marathon. Yes, all in one day. Ironically, I did that last year in Chattanooga, Tennessee, where I last saw my son. The event was held on September 29, 2019, which was also Gold Star Mother's Day. Coincidence? I don't think so. I could feel Jason with me every mile of the way. The name Team Jason was formed when he was in Walter Reed fighting for his life. Team Jason continues eight years later to keep Jason's memory alive. There are many athletes in the Columbus area, across the U.S., and even worldwide that wear Team Jason infantry blue shirts and wristbands. Jason's picture is on the course of several races a year throughout the U.S. His name is on the National Infantry, Global War on Terrorism, and other memorial walls throughout the country. This weekend, my husband Mike would have been participating in the ride across Georgia from Savannah to Columbus for Team Jason, except it had to be canceled due to the virus which has gripped our nation and the world. However, we will continue to say and wear his name until our very last breath, because that's what Gold Star families do. Jason will always be our hero. Jason was assigned to the 13th Cavalry Regiment, 3rd Brigade Combat Team, 1st Armor Division of Fort Bliss, Texas. Some of his awards and decorations include the Bronze Star, Purple Heart, Army Commendation Medal, Army Good Conduct Medal, Afghanistan Campaign Medal with a Campaign Star, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, and the Combat Infantry Badge. When asked to speak today in remembrance of Memorial Day, my first reaction was that of fear and terror. But then I remembered that every day is Memorial Day for every Gold Star family member, and today is no different. All of us have endured the loss of our loved ones, and I decided that this was a great opportunity to share Jason's memory with you and to bring awareness to all Gold Star family members in our ongoing pain and sacrifice. In closing, I simply ask that this Memorial Day, that you please say my son's name, Specialist Jason Colletons, make a toast to him as you enjoy your time with friends and family, because that is what we would want. Remember all the heroes past and present that have sacrificed to keep this country free. Never take your freedom for granted. So long as they speak your name, you shall never die, and we shall never forget. Thank you.
Janet, Nicole, we can't thank you enough for coming today to share your story as our nation pauses to honor your soldiers on Memorial Day. And Nicole, we'll say a special prayer for you on that anniversary, the 14th anniversary of Doug's death. Those two names that you've just heard about are two of the almost 7,000 names on the Global War on Terrorism Memorial here at the Infantry Museum. Brigadier General Pete Jones will talk to you about that a little bit and show you some highlights from last year's ceremony, and hope that you can join us this year on the 12th of September as we engrave more names and rededicate that sacred memorial again.
As we come to the end of our program, we realize that this weekend, we will again observe Memorial Day and remember the soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines, and Coast Guardsmen throughout our wars that have made the ultimate sacrifice. I'm proud that here in Columbus, Georgia... I'm proud that here in Columbus, Georgia, and at the National Infantry Museum at the steps of Fort Benning, Georgia, we have the Global War on Terror Memorial. This year, on the 11th and 12th of September, towards the 19th anniversary attacks on the Twin Towers, we will again rededicate this memorial with names that now place our casualties well over 7,000. I hope you can come and support that event as we bond with our Gold Star family members. You know, tonight, we're on the eve of engraving and unveiling 96 new names on our granite Inside each one of those names is a story. It's a story that only many of you can tell. We picked this day so that you, our families, can know that this Saturday belongs to you.
The Gold Star community is thankfully small, but amazingly mighty. Together we heal, together we grow, and together we understand the dangers of war.
When I walked in the room, they knew that my life had changed forever. In the Army, we love to talk about lessons learned, and I learned that I could either be bitter or grateful, but I couldn't be both. So instead of being bitter about my circumstances, I chose and continue to choose to be grateful for the time that I was able to spend with Ryan.
Each died for a cause he considered more important than his own life. Let us pledge to do our utmost to carry out what must have been their wish, that no other generation will have to share their experiences and repeat their sacrifices.
When a soldier, sailor, airman, or marine falls in battle, the impact of their loss is not just felt by the immediate family. The impact is felt across generations.
Their names now etched in the granite on one of the memorial's eight plaques join the nearly 7,000 soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines that have given their life in defense of this nation since September 11, 2001. Today, we honor all of them. This memorial ensures that they are honored not just today, but always.
Well, we're certainly blessed to live in this great country. Ms. DeSenzio and Ms. Crane, I want to tell you on behalf of our 300 members how much we appreciate your sacrifice and the sacrifice of your loved ones. We're so proud of the men and women that have the courage to protect our country and our freedoms. In recognition of your time here today, as is our tradition, we're going to donate a children's book to the Columbus Public Library that will be inscribed with the name of your soldier and the Gold Star family. Thank you. To our members, I want to thank you for continuing to keep Rotary on your calendar. Next week, we'll hear from Pace Alter, who's the president and COO of WC Bradley Real Estate, and learn a little bit more about the plans for the riverfront and uptown area. I want to extend a special thank you to the National Infantry Museum and their staff for making it possible for us to broadcast here. This is a wonderful venue, and I look forward to returning when I can spend some time with the exhibits. And with no further business, we're now adjourned.